Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council meeting for January 24th work session. It's a joint work session with LTD and I think I said earlier that we'd wait until that, but you might as well.
Okay.
We want to welcome you here before we bore you with all the things we've been doing, but go ahead.
So I'll call the LTD board to order and do roll call. Gary Gillespie.
Here.
Mike Dubic.
Here.
Greg Evans.
Here.
Doris Towery.
This is from here.
Jean Corchey.
Here.
And I don't see yet, do we know if Ed's gonna make it?
He said he might be late.
Oh, he may be late.
Or he may make it, okay.
Okay. Well, I just want to say welcome to everyone in the first thing before we get to our sort of joint work session item, we have our first item which is committee reports and items of interest from the mayor, city council, city manager where we share the things that we've been doing, so you'll just relax for a few minutes and we'll try to be entertaining, or at least somewhat. So I'll start out and say that I appreciate an opportunity last week to read at Prairie Mountain School in Bethel, that was fun, and then had a meeting that I thought you guys would be interested in with the county and Lane Historic Museum about the possibilities for the, one more round of the conversation about the possibilities for the post office. And so they're taking that item to the Board of County Commissioners, and so you may see that circulate through again to see where we go with that one, so just letting you, keeping you up in that conversation. Let's see, I went to two meetings with our congressional delegation, we had two of them in town, Senator Wyden was here to do a town hall where he did a great job of negotiating questions about use of forests and some other tough issues. And Senator Merkley was also here and really talking about an important issue, and Chris did a great job of introducing him and working at that on foreclosures and some of the challenges that people are facing with housing issues. We had a wonderful both Martin Luther King Day walk and also an evening event on Martin Luther King Day that was very well attended and appreciated being able to participate in both of those. Gave the Bold Steps Award last week and actually gave it officially on Sunday to Cafe Yum for their good environmental, economic, and social equity practices within their cafe, and that was really great. Went to the ceremony in Springfield around our firefighters, commendations and so forth, and that was good to be there. And then I'll just end up by saying what a great parade we had this weekend and how fun it was for everybody and a huge, huge, thousands of people turnout, people really wonderful community building opportunity for us, and I enjoyed it terrifically, and I just wanted to, I sent a message out earlier today, but I just want to say publicly, I want to praise our staff and the U of O staff, and particularly want to call out Sarah Maderi and Billy Moser for the huge amount of lifting they had to do to make that thing function as well as it did, so I think it was great, and I thank you city manager and all of our staff, thank you so much, want to give you all a big. And Dan, too, yes, absolutely. So with that, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you, and I was going to say something about the parade, too, just that it was amazing that you were able to put that together so quickly. And when I told Sarah how good it was, she gave all the credit to Billy Moser, but that's the way Sarah is. And while we're talking about the university, I thought it was a good example of cooperation between the city and the university, and I just wanted to call attention to this that was in all our packets, the Innovation Discovery Connection, and it tells about some of the great, other great things the university's doing, that if you haven't looked at that, you should look. I think there will be lots more opportunities that we should take to cooperate in different ways with the university. I want to spend some time talking about what I think is a great injustice, our assessment practice, and in particular, a person, I won't use the name, but a person who was not low income but is now no income, zero income, and they can't get credit for being low income, and the assessments are going to really just hurt them a great deal. They've already used their savings, they have medical bills, you lose your, they lost their health insurance when they lost their jobs, that happens to a lot of people. They aren't the only people in that situation, but they're the ones that the city is doing something to, in a sense. I wanted to read what David Cole wrote to me, he is immediate past president of Crest Drive Neighbors, and he's now the, their newsletter editor and treasurer, and he says to me, "You may recall that in the discussion of the assessment process several years ago at Cascade Manor, city people assured us no one would be forced to move or go bankrupt because of the assessments. There were remedies available. Given the economic downturn, are we now to conclude that the city can no longer honestly say that? The remedies then and now in place didn't envision long unemployment plus mortgages underwater." And he wrote that in relation to the person I'm talking about, and he gave me permission to use his name here. But I hope that there's something we can do for someone who is, has no income at the present time, and lots of other problems, and I won't go into detail about the problems, but I hope that there can be some kind, they, she said, "There must be something the city can do." And I have asked John about this before and Mark, and I hope that you can bring something back to us that we can vote to do about that. And speaking of injustice, I'm concerned about our colleagues across the street also, and especially, I think if people are, well, I worry that people may be reluctant to run for public office if they do a lot of work and then get persecuted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. You may borrow it. Here you go.
Thank you, Betty, very much. A lot here, I'll try and move quickly. Went to the Springfield State of the City address, it was on the 13th, attended with the mayor, the police commission as well on the 13th, and we'll save that for a more in-depth report at a future time. Attended the opening night for Matthew Night Arena on the 13th as well, which is a fantastic, fantastic, beautiful facility, I was just unbelievably impressed. On the 19th, I attended a hearing at the Board of County Commissioners where they were discussing the 190 agreements and 190, with the city, and the 195 agreements as it pertains to special districts in the Santa Clara and River Road area. Now, one of the things that we've experienced in the last year or so was kind of a county board direction where I believe we received a demand letter from them, and there's been some discussion about working with those folks. Our council went out on a, extended our hand and friendship to include those folks in the SNAP application process, and they were awarded that, so they're going to be working very proactively in order to address some of the metro plan problems and some of the refinement plan issues that they have in that area. And I was very happy when I attended the Board of County Commissioners meeting to find that there's a renewed spirit of cooperation at the board for us to work together between the county and city and help these folks in Santa Clara and River Road to try and work through some of these issues, and I think that's going to prove to be a real fruitful sort of process as we move forward. And I really appreciate the board's perspective on wanting to work with us. Attended as well the combined Springfield and Eugene Fire Awards and recognition ceremony on the 20th, and that was the very first combined one where they had people sworn in to serve each community, and I think that the, we can be very proud of our fire department, I thought they did a very good job with that. George and I have been working with the Cal Young neighbors as well, as they go through a kind of a transition as one of the larger neighborhood groups. They're looking at perhaps subdividing into several neighborhood associations, and so we did some side meetings with staff on that, George and I, and then went and met with them on the 20th to go through that with the neighbors and begin the process of looking at that. So if there are people who live in the Cal Young Neighborhood Association who would like to serve in a leadership position in a smaller neighborhood, please contact George or I. As well, I would say thank you to the staff for the fantastic job on the parade, they did an amazing job, as everybody said, with such little time, I've rarely seen it's equal in our city, that was really exciting. And then I would remind everyone of this Wednesday evening's Eugene Chambers Celebration of Business and Presentation of Our First Citizen. Thank you.
Right on the money.
Right on time. Thank you, Mike. So this last couple of weeks, I was, felt like I was running around without a, like a chicken without a head. I attended the Martin Luther King March in the morning, I went to the Whittaker Community Neighbors Meeting, and they actually were discussing BRT, and LTD was present to answer a lot of questions, and before I forget, John, they have concerns because the potty issue has surfaced, they've removed it from Whittaker, from the Whittaker Public Station, and nobody knows why, so if you could follow up on that for me, I'd appreciate it. I attended the Leadership Breakfast at Peace Health University District, and Mal Pine gave a really nice overview of the plans that they have there, they had them up on reader boards in the back, and then a new neurosurgeon was there, Dr. Houck, and he looked all of 25, and he's like one of six who can do all these amazing things, and it really goes to show you how Peace Health is becoming a regional provider for our community. I also attended the State of the City in Springfield, I attended the opening of Matt Court, and my grandson was there and got a picture, thanks to my friends, of me and my grandson and my son in front, so that'll definitely be a keeper. We had an El Rapa meeting today, and I have to tell you that after doing our two-day consensus team-building process, it's a kind of gentler group of people, and I heard people say things that really made me feel a lot better about being there, and I've agreed, along with two other of the board, to sit in on an employee listening session, so that'll be February 4th. And then I'm also going to be gone the week of, the second week in February, I'm going to DC, Naleo has awarded me a scholarship to go to the, to their redistricting training that they're having, and it's all pretty much from the Latino perspective, so I'll be gone for that week.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, the reason I wasn't at the meeting on the 11th and the 13th, which I did miss, was because I was in Washington DC at a training session on community engagement by the Harwood Institute, which is one of the national leaders on community engagement, so I came back with a lot of great ideas for how we can have even better. We're already having good conversations with the community, how we can even make those even better and more effective, so I was very excited about that week. Also, as the mayor mentioned, the Senator Merkley event at the courthouse to work on legislation on mortgage relief and foreclosure relief. Just one quick statistic to give you an idea of the context of this, some hardest-hit money was available from the federal government to pay for mortgage assistance here in Lane County, and there were 186 slots available, the funding was available to support 186 slots, and you had to apply to be on the list to see whether or not you qualified for funding. For those 186 slots, there were 1,900 applications. That will give you just a sense of how large the scope of this issue is, there is not enough money available to really deal with it just as a head-on issue, we really have to be smart, and some legislation is definitely helpful. These are folks right here in Lane County, they're not homeless people, these are people in homes who could become homeless. The Springfield Chamber Dinner, I attended that last week, it was great, a very nice event, they love to poke fun at Eugene in a very good-natured kind of way, we have a good time with that, and maybe we can poke fun back at them, and also in a good-natured way, I think that will be fun. And also, the Champions Parade was a great event, and everybody's already saying how great it was, I'm sure there'll be a lot more about it, but I can't thank all the people that worked on it, everybody from the mayor, Sarah, Billy, everybody did just a great job with it. It was a giant mutual effort, and so it took a lot of hands to make that work, but I was very proud and pleased to be involved.
Good. Alan?
Thanks. I was out of town last week, so I was at the MLK and the parade in spirit, but I wasn't able to be there.
Yeah, he was off suffering somewhere.
Nice tan.
I did attend the opening night of Matt Arena, I probably have a different perspective than most people in that worked on that arena and the mitigation plan for the neighborhood for so long that my, looking at it through a lens of how the transportation, parking, and traffic patterns all worked, and I thought that that worked all very reasonably well, and all the hard work that the people in the Fairmont neighborhood put in to developing that plan, along with the U of O folks, really paid off, and I think it has some tweaking, but it really did work, and I think it'll be, helped the neighborhood out quite a bit. I did go to the MPC meeting on the 13th, and we appointed the MPC Lane Act representative, and who's here? Andrea? Actually, it's George and Andrea. And then we did this presentation, I think, with LTD, so hopefully I'll learn something new. And we went through our, we're going through the Regional Transportation Plan list of projects that have been on that list for like 20 years, and we've gone, and we decided to go through those and see if they were still relevant. Some of those issues have been there forever and ever, and so we're looking at them with fresh lenses to, and asking questions about them, and that process is moving forward for eventual approval of that plan, modified plan sometime next year. And then finally, we approved a letter of support for Safe Routes to Schools program that the city of Eugene put together, which is a really excellent program, and actually nationally recognized for the good work that those folks do.
Thanks, Alan. George?
Well, on the 13th, while everybody was enjoying the opening of the new arena, I was attending a Harlow Neighborhood Association meeting.
You guys have fireworks, too?
No, we didn't have fireworks. Actually, it was a new venue, it was at the North Park Community Church on Harlow Road, and I just want to thank the people from that church for opening up the doors to the community, for letting us use their facility, and a sound system that's what was sorely needed because we've been meeting at the library at Monroe School, and the sound there is, you know, kind of bad. Kind of mixed emotions because my daughter went to Monroe Middle School, my grandson went to Monroe Middle School, so I've been spending a lot of time over the years there. Basically, what that meeting was, was all the elected officials that represent the folks in the Harlow Neighborhood Association. Nancy Nathanson was there for a while, she had to leave, Commissioner Liken was there, the E-Web.
She had a game to go to, I think.
Yeah, he had a game, she had a game to go to. But the E-Web Commissioners was there, and our friend Joe Harwood from E-Web was there and gave a presentation on the construction work that's going to be going on, Colbert Road. I brought this up at a previous meeting. It's going to start in a couple of weeks, and it's going to go probably till mid-April, and it's going to impact the traffic on Colbert Road considerably, so just a heads-up, start looking for alternative routes. And it's going to be from Harlow all the way down to Oakway. I also went to the Fire EMS Awards and thought it was a really, really good ceremony and the recognition to the, some of the members of both fire departments, which is now kind of one fire department. Mike mentioned about the neighborhood boundary discussion that we started, Mike and I actually attended a meeting on the 18th with Mike Kennison and representatives from the Neighborhood Leadership Council and the Cal Young and Harlow Neighborhood to kind of go over the basic groundwork of what we're, what we have to do to look at perhaps changing the current makeup of the Cal Young Neighborhood Association. So that was, on Thursday, the 20th, we had that meeting at the Cal Young Neighbors, and that was one of the main topics, as well as a discussion about the possible location of a cell tower at the Oakway Golf Course. There's some pretty heated discussions going on there. And then, again, like Mike said, on Wednesday, the 26th is the Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, and usually they do the, I can't remember, they call them the shining stars, the upcoming high schools.
They do, the shining stars, high school students?
High school students. They usually recognize one high school student from all the Eugene high schools, and then they have one of the ones, kind of like the outstanding. That's always fun to see because these are our future citizens coming up. And then also, on Wednesday afternoon, following our work session, is the first IGR committee, and the packet came out, and it's about 30 pages long, so we're going to have a lengthy meeting Wednesday, so.
Thank you. George?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank you once again, Mayor Percy, for appointing me to the Human Rights Commission. I attended my first meeting last week, and I counted about 85 people at the meeting, and I thought, "Great, they heard I was going to be here. They weren't there to see me." I was very disappointed, but actually, they had a very serious issue, and that was, they had heard that the Human Rights Commission was drafting a letter reprimanding, or calling for reprimand of Israel for their intervention with the Freedom Flotilla, which was headed for Gaza, and that's all news, and I won't go into the news on what happened, but the people who were testifying, I sent a memo out to council, were mistaken, the Human Rights Commission had not drafted a letter, a subcommittee was going to write a letter, and subsequently placed the letter on hold. So there was a great deal of testimony continuing today in the register guard even regarding that, but the HRC has not taken any action on writing a letter reprimanding Israel, and if the HRC were to do so, it would come before council for any action, it wouldn't be an HRC action, it would come to the council. Wanted to make that for certain. CRG continues to meet, we'll spend, what, 15, 20 minutes together, no, six or seven hours together tomorrow. And we're all looking forward to the masterful work of our city manager bringing all these many thousands of hours of discussion together to something that can be understood in a couple of meetings in front of the city council. I have a great deal of optimism. Out in Bethel, we're planning gardens, we're planning organic gardens somewhat with the help of the city, in conjunction with ABC, Active Bethel Citizens, and with the local school, with Bethel School District, we're going to be breaking ground on some gardens fairly soon, on organic gardens for education and for public use, also for, to provide food that's not commonly available to people, organic food. And I'll give you more news on that as things develop. We're going to be a part of the SNAP program, but that won't start until June, we're going to get a start several months ahead of the SNAP program. And finally, last Wednesday, I had a chance to attend a town hall that was put together by Rob Handy and Commissioners Handy and Sorensen regarding plastic bags in grocery stores, very interesting. We had testimony from a number of different people regarding the dangers of using plastic bags, not just for the Texas-sized island of plastic in the ocean, which is not there, by the way, but how difficult it makes recycling other products. So at some point, I'll be sending more information to the council as a whole on plastic bags and what is happening in the legislature regarding plastic bags. Thank you.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the Martin Luther King March in the morning and went to the ceremony at the Holt Center in the evening. Also attended my first meeting at the Metropolitan Wastewater Commission, it's going to take me a while to get up to speed, I really know nothing about it, we just, we basically accepted last year's financial report and audit and got a look at the upcoming budget, so it's going to take me a while, I think. Also attended a McKenzie watershed council meeting, fish biologists outlined all of the work they've done to improve habitat on the, above and below Cougar Reservoir, as well as on the main stem and the side channels, and the E-Web representative kind of outlined the new approach that they're taking to the problem of protecting the drinking water supply that was rushed through at the, somewhat at the county and caused a big flap over there, and they realized, "Okay, it's time, we have to slow it down, we have to talk to all the stakeholders, it'll take a lot longer, but that's the way to do it." So they, hell, I couldn't go, there was a conflict, but they had the first meeting at somebody's house in the lower stretch of the river around, I'm not really sure exactly where it was, below Leeburg somewhere, so they're going to have a whole series, and not just on the McKenzie, but around the county, too, because it's any water source, it's not just the McKenzie. So that'll be good. Other than that, I was, it seems like I've been to lots of meetings regarding the school district's budget woes, and I guess that's about it.
Thank you, and Mike?
Yeah, just a quick request to the city manager at the Cal Young meeting, and then in several other formats, I've just received a number of requests about the potential to create a community garden on the undeveloped land that is directly adjacent to Bond Park. Bond Park has a good chunk of land there that's city land and has been undeveloped for quite a while, and I don't think we have plans in the CIP to develop it for a while. A lot of the neighbors want to know if we can make that a community garden, and I'd love to hear from somebody in staff about the feasibility of that, please.
Okay, we'll follow up.
Thank you, sir.
City manager?
Thanks, Mayor, just a couple of quick items around the parade today, there's a couple of other folks I just want to recognize, kind of behind the scenes, Mark Lloydman from our, the Holt Center actually did a lot of the operations and a lot of the logistics for that, and put together that really well. Also Daryl Schultz, one of our police sergeants, and his team, I think did a really nice, masterful job on the traffic control. I think we also need to thank to LTD, who did quite a bit on rerouting and providing a variety of services that way, and so we thank you also, so this is actually the appropriate time to mention that.
I heard something about where, it wasn't in the paper, somewhere they said where MX went through and everybody moved and let it through, and then went back and got their seats again.
So, yeah, they played an important part in that also. And then I also had a chance to be at the opening of the Matthew Night Arena, I know the fire marshal was nervous, but in a good way, but also want to say thank you to Stuart Ramsing and his team, who did a really great job working with the university to make sure that that was open and ready for play, and as you know, in a project that large, there's a multitude of small and large things have to get worked out right up to the last minute, so he and his team did a great job. Just a reminder, the next couple of months are busy, in addition to tonight, with the schools and Anita Water MX, you'll have a couple more meetings on this discussion coming up, In Vision Eugene, we'll have an initial discussion on ward redistricting as a result of the census, and then of course we'll have another discussion around City Hall, so there's a, it's a busy couple of months as we're moving forward.
And just to finish this whole section, I just forgot to mention that the mayor is one-on-one where we go out to a different ward every month to, usually to a grocery store to invite the public to come and talk to us about any issue they want to talk to us about. We have one tomorrow evening at 5:00 at the grocery outlet on River Road with Counselor Ortiz, so, and I think it said in the newspaper, it was just for North Eugene, but that's not so, it's for, certainly it's in North Eugene, but it is aimed for anybody in the whole community who wants to come and talk to us about it, they're welcome and invited to come and sit down and have a chat.
And the owners of the store are very welcoming and gracious.
They are.
Mike is the gentleman's name, and I forgot his wife's name, but they're always, they're glad to have us there.
They make us very welcome, so if you've got an issue you want to talk to Counsel Ortiz or me about, please come by at 5:00 tomorrow, between 5:00 and 6:00. Okay, so now we're going to go to our big work session item, which is why we have this full table tonight, thank you for listening to all what's happening in the city, you've probably learned more than you knew was going on, it's all out there. So we're going to talk about MX, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll turn over to Mark and his staff, I know that there's a presentation prepared, and then really for us, on our side, it's just an opportunity for the council to ask questions and have information shared between the board and the council, and then we'll take it from there, so I'll turn it over to your staff.
We will, we're going to have a PowerPoint, so.
I'm swinging that one.
Hopefully, picture's worth a thousand words and we got more than one picture, so, but you can convey a lot of information without using a thousand words. This, I would hope that we could leave the meeting tonight answering the core questions for the council, I think that is absolutely critical, and in any contentious decision of this sort, there are, you know, there are always kinds of he-said, she-said kinds of situations, so from our perspective, it would be important, we're going to go through the material, and please feel free to ask a question as we're there, so you understand kind of what we're presenting, but then when we're done, to the degree that the council has time, I really hope that we can jump in and address those kinds of questions, and if we don't have the answer tonight, then we can get back and have that for you soon thereafter. So with that, maybe I'll turn it over to Tom, he's going to do our PowerPoint.
Thanks. You know, the first thing I'll say is that, as you know, our gateway project opened up recently, and just looking at the ridership to date, we're moved from a recently, and just looking at the ridership to date, we moved from about 6,000 rides that we were seeing on Franklin to about 9,500 rides. So, that's a good thing. But the reason I'm telling you that now is that actually our model projected about that much increase in the first year, so we feel that kinda lends some credibility to the modeling. So, as we go through that, we can talk more about it.
So, Tom, are you saying that the Franklin leg of MX increased from 6,000?
No, the total MX system.
Okay, all right.
Is now carrying about 9,500 rides. So, to start with, you know, you've all been to, just kinda looking around the table, I can see evidence that many of us have been to the eye doctor before. And as you go through that, you've maybe sat in the chair and gotten the lenses, kind of, is that better, is that better, is that better? That's what this process is all about. We've been at it for about three and a half years now, and we're at a point now where we're starting to get some clarity on what the issues are and kind of the path forward. So, what I'm gonna talk about tonight has to do, just a little review about why MX, why Eugene, West Eugene. Talk about, you know, as this resolution is happening, we're hearing from more and more of our committees and community organizations on their recommendations. Talk a little bit about the mitigation plans that we've made, basically refinements to our alternatives. And then, of importance is, you know, after we're through all this, making the decisions and all, we wanna make sure we have a competitive project. And so, I'm gonna give a little summary on the performance measures, basically the key results as to how the different alternatives are performing. And then we'll talk about the process from here. So, first of all, the regional policy direction really gets at why MX. You know, back in the late nineties, we were, mid-nineties, we were looking at an issue for, from an operational standpoint, operating on congested corridors was becoming more and more costly. And we'll have some more information on the operating costs to go over with you on that. So, that was coincidental with the region's interest in looking at transit corridors as a, kind of an organizing element for growth. And so, looking at improving transit service to the entire community, giving the community some options, and in the words of Rob Bennett, "Something that was competitive with the odd deal." So, that's why we're looking at MX. In terms of why West Eugene, the city council, back in October of 2006, said LTD, "Would you please look at West Eleventh?" And we said, "You betcha." No, it was due to consideration about the needs for transportation needs out in West Eugene, and supporting neighborhood livability by providing a sustainable option for connecting across the region. You've seen the signs out there talking about West Eleventh being nowhere, and I just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about why we don't think that's so. Now, we're gonna just be looking west of Garfield on the alignment, there's the alignment. Here are the multifamily housing units that are spread across this stretch of the corridor. A significant amount of multifamily housing here. And I, just for reference or for scale, some of you might be able to pick out West Eighteenth down there, it's kind of a major, the major corridor south of Eleventh. That's about a half a mile from West Eleventh. And generally speaking, in our planning, we'll be looking at anywhere from a third to a half a mile being a reasonable walking distance for MX-type service. This is the employment area. And then, to kind of bring it home here, as part of our project, we're looking at building three bike head connections across the channel. That would allow us to connect all of that, basically knit the corridor together with our project. Another thing that people talk about is, is it the same as the other corridors? You know, in people's perception, I think the Amazon Channel really provides a separation for people. They don't think about that being all kind of close together. But as you look at this, these are, this chart and the next one, look at population and employment along the different corridors. And so, the Franklin Corridor is in blue, Gateway is in red, those are the two that we're operating now, and then we had the Sixth, Seventh, and Thirteenth options, green and purple. And you can see from a population standpoint, the alternative corridors that we're looking at in West Eugene have very similar population levels, and in fact, the 2031 estimate is obviously based on the city's plan for growth, and that's suggesting that in fact, either Sixth, Seventh, or Thirteenth would have more population at the end of the planning horizon. Similarly, for corridor employment, the most interesting, 'cause it's the most moving, is the gateway one. Back in 1990, not a lot of employment, but you can see over time that that's really grown and is expected to continue to grow. But what's interesting is that employment along Sixth, Seventh, and Thirteenth is reasonable, reasonable levels relative to the other quarters where we're operating today. So, from our standpoint, both from a population and employment standpoint, West Eugene makes a lot of sense. The next part here is to talk about what we've heard from various committees and again, community organizations. The first one I'm gonna talk about is the West Eugene Corridor Committee. They, of all of our groups, have spent the most time with the project, being organized fairly early on after we had filed to prepare environmental analysis of the corridor. And they actually played a key role in the purpose and need of the project. We spent quite a bit of time, and Dean and Greg, and at the time Jerry Gatos, were sitting on that committee, and you might remember the time we spent kind of parsing each statement of the purpose and need statement. So, they provided.
You were there too.
Yes, thanks as well. The purposes and need statements, important is a foundational piece for defining the project, again, kind of the first stage of that resolution to get more clarity. At their December 7th meeting, we had eleven of the fourteen regular members participating. We asked them, based on their experience throughout the project, to give us advice about what were the most important criteria to use or to consider in making the decision about a locally preferred alternative. And what they had, based on their input, ridership, and these aren't in order particularly, ridership, the interface with bed, bike, and vehicle facilities, the effect on fiscal stability of LTD, basically, and the potential for acquisitions or displacements of residents, businesses, and parking. I think that really conveys the essence of what we've been trying to do in terms of balancing our operational needs for LTD with the intent of trying to minimize the impacts on the existing community. We had the MPO Citizen Advisory Committee providing us with input. They are, they're a great group of people in terms of really understanding the community, having a cross-section of the community, sitting at the table, talking to us about, you know, the public engagement process that we have for this project, as well as kind of substantively looking at the project itself and providing input. The motion, they had a motion to recommend the no-build option, but it died for lack of a second. But the motion that they had was to recommend the Eleventh-Thirteenth alternative with mitigation to MPC, and that's the group that they report to. But the Joint LPA Committee will be considering that advice in making its recommendation. That motion also included a suggestion that Sixth, Seventh be built sooner than later, and passed ten to two. The Steering Committee, the MX Steering Committee, is a standing committee that LTD has, and it's made up of, again, a cross-section of individuals, including George Poling, serving on the Steering Committee, several of our board members, county commissioners, Springfield councillor, as well as just citizens at large. That group actually passed a motion recommending that the LTD board consider the Thirteenth-Eleventh alternative with mitigation and to continue to advance the no-build alternative. You'll notice in favor were five, opposed was one, and George, I don't know if you wanna talk about, you were the opposed, had to do with the fact that we didn't have a TSM option in that motion.
That's about it.
So.
But if I could say one thing, I did bring it up at our items at one of the meetings, is that of the recommended alternatives, I felt that the West Eleventh and Thirteenth alternative was the best one, but I didn't want to limit what was moving forward, and I wanted to move forward that recommendation and the no-build as well as the TSM. And since the TSM was not added to it, I voted in opposition.
Tom, why did the JLPAC? Well, it was kind of a, I'm just gonna say it was kind of a group think that happened. Sonny Chikering's kinda started things off, saying that he felt that, you know, he was, he's on the JLPAC, and so he didn't want to state a preference at this point without the full information. I think in retrospect, what staff could have said was that it's okay to make a choice based on the information you have to date, you know, with the certain flexibility that you can move that for, you know, change that as more information comes available. But that's the basic reason.
So, all of them? Yeah, they all saying they're gonna vote on it again. So, this is, we'll hold off and make our vote when it's appropriate on the JLPAC. When it gels at JLPAC.
So, you're the first person that's got the acronym, and that's what we're.
Yeah, it's a terrible acronym.
Well, there you go.
What do we say?
We say LPA Committee. So, the project management group is a group of staff from the various agencies involved in the project. So, we have Al Coghlan County, Eugene, LTD, and ODOT. And that group recommended Thirteenth-Eleventh alternative with mitigation. They stressed the importance of building out the system. To say that another way, it's not Thirteenth-Eleventh or Sixth- Seventh-Eleventh, but which is first and which is second. The Sixth- Seventh-Eleventh serves different neighborhoods, was another observation that they made. We also got unsolicited recommendations or resolutions from the Associated Students of the University of Oregon and the Graduate Teaching Fellows Federation. Again, those conversations involve discussions about the importance of building the system for the regional connectivity. You can see here, the Graduate Teaching Fellows Federation stressed that the construction contractors are local and unionized. There's also a statewide group, the Association of Oregon Rail and Transit Advocates. They had, in fact, just this weekend passed a resolution in support of a build alternative for West Eugene. They had called and asked for some information about the project, we provided it. And there's another good acronym for you, AWORDA. The West Eugene Collaborative got together, met a few times, lots of subcommittee meetings. They led, that effort led to what you see up here. Basically, a letter went to the council, I'm sure you're all familiar with that. My takeaway was that they're advocating for the integration of their vision with all the plans currently being updated, and that we need a functional transportation system at both ends of the metro area. The Eugene Area Chamber actually updated its position statement. They had, originally had one that was a tentative support for the MX concept, that was developed before the Franklin Corridor was built. They realized that it had been some time since that had been made, so they updated it for the purposes of this project. Again, you can see here, recognizing the inherent challenges, number of properties and buildings are vulnerable to significant losses of property and street access, and their commitment to work with the property owners and businesses out on the corridor. Based on that date, came to a conclusion to support West Thirteenth and Eleventh. We're still waiting to hear from other groups, in particular, of interest to the council, the CLUTAC, the Coordinated Land Use Transportation Action Committee, three members from the Planning Commission, three members from the Sustainability Commission, have been meeting several times. I think they met four times so far, and in fact, they're meeting on Wednesday to try and come to some conclusions about recommendations. And again, their effort was to try and apply the city's triple bottom line model to looking at the different alternatives, and we'll see what they come up with. And we've also been doing a lot of neighborhood outreach. We continue to meet, as Andrea referenced, we were out at the.
Thank you.
Widdicker Neighborhoods, thank you. And the other thing that we wanted to point out here under neighborhood outreach, and just so we don't forget it, we went through a design option effort a couple of years ago, or a year ago, year and a half ago, about for Thirteenth and Sixth Seventh, looking at things that we could do as part of our design that would better integrate the designs into the neighborhood. And now that, that effort was called the We Do Project, and it basically led to improvements or changes to our designs for pedestrian and bike crossings, in particular across Thirteenth, as well as a number of other design elements that we've incorporated into the project. At this point, I'm gonna ask John to talk about the mitigation options.
Okay. Just real quickly, won't go into a lot of detail here, but just to follow up on what Tom and George were talking about with the no-build, I also wanted to mention that at the third meeting of the Joint LPA Committee, they did eliminate from their further consideration all West Seventh Place alternatives, as well as the Thirteenth-Eleventh and Sixth Seventh alternatives without mitigation. So, they're moving forward and continuing to look at TSM, no-build, Thirteenth-Eleventh, and Sixth Seventh with mitigation. So, the mitigation that we're looking at now, as Tom said, resulted from a lot of meetings and analysis, meetings with property owners, meeting with the public, and meeting with decision makers. In summary, we've, the mitigation primarily removes priority transit lanes, we have various forms of those, from the areas you see on the screen. As an example, I'll get to them a little bit later, but that's, this is Thirteenth-Eleventh, so we've got a reduction in travel, transit travel lanes on Jefferson, and a lot on Thirteenth to avoid impacts to trees, including realignment of the transitway on Thirteenth to save trees. And then, some on Garfield to, well, actually on Chambers to avoid impacts to, direct impact to business property and to a potential apartment building impact that we're trying to avoid. And then a whole bunch on West Eleventh, and that's primarily to avoid parking impacts to businesses. We're also adding, looking at adding a bridge at the terminus connection, which would assist people getting over and connecting with the end of the line across the Amazon Channel in the north. Sixth Seventh, that design option uses the two-way design option on Charnleton, so it, we don't have to go use a couplet on Lincoln and Charnleton, we just have the busway on one, on one street. We try to reassign a lane, so essentially taking over the lane wherever possible on Sixth and Seventh. And then, more minor mitigation changes on Sixth and Seventh, where the, most of the mitigation is shared with the other alternative on West Eleventh. But we do, we do try to avoid all property impacts wherever possible. This is a quick example of the Thirteenth-Eleventh mitigation. You can see in the, on the top of the screen, there's a new frontage alleyway that's created to separate the housing that exists that Kurt's pointing out. That's a, that would separate the transitway from the existing housing there so that they would, could maintain their front access. This is example of where we're trying to, we, saving trees, the trees on the right-hand side that form sort of a canopy over the street, that the residents are very interested in maintaining, even though they're on the fairgrounds property, they're landscaped trees of the fairgrounds. We looked at a way to save them. The original design is this, where the trees were removed. The redesign is this, where the transit way goes a little bit further into the fairgrounds property, and that property is the OSU extension area, which is no longer being used, so we'd work with the fairgrounds to acquire that property for that purpose.
Is there going to be a station in there?
There is a station just, just in the foreground that you can't see, right?
There's one down in front of the front entrance to the fairground, and there's one by the base center.
Right.
So this is in between.
This is an example of working with the property owners. That's Papa's Pizza. This is a before and after picture, so the top is the before, the original design. Papa's is the gray building on the top with the parking. They and we were concerned about the amount of parking that we would have to, we'd have to acquire land there that they use for parking. Also, Kurt, can you point out the residential apartment building right there, 12th and Chambers? Yeah, just right there, right there, yeah. So we might, there's a possibility of bumping into that, which would affect residents. We wanted to avoid that as well. So you see on the bottom, we've just gone to mixed traffic, using the existing travel lane, and really minimizing the effect on Papa's Pizza. We've met with them since then, and they've told us they can live with that. This is a quick summary of kind of impacts on West 11th. It's a little bit hard to see, but the red is, the red and blue in the top image are the original acquisitions. Below, you can see the mitigated acquisitions where the blue goes away. So wherever it's red is where the remaining strip acquisitions that would be required under the mitigated design. So that blue is essentially what we've mitigated away. That's the quick summary.
Thanks. So like I said, obviously, one of the important things is that we have, at the end of this decision-making process, a project that's going to be competitive in the federal process. And those of you who are at the Gateway luncheon, heard Rick Crachalis, the FTA Region 10 Administrator, talking about the increase in the number of communities across the country that are interested in implementing Bus Rapid Transit. So competitiveness is going to be an important element. So what I'm going to go over really quickly here is just some of the elements that are considered in FTA's analysis of the competitiveness of a project. Basically, they're going to look at the capital and operating costs, and then the benefits we generate for those costs. So we're looking at things like ridership and travel time, both transit travel time and auto travel time. So here's a graph showing the capital costs for the project. 13th, 11th, about $80 million. 67th to 11th is about $89 million. The operating costs, we've got this table here, which is a summary, a table summary, and then we'll have a graphic of it as well. But basically, you can see the 13th, 11th option, over the long run, leads to savings of about $400,000 a year in operating costs. It starts out, you can see if you do the difference between no build and the build alternative, you can see how much the marginal cost is for adding MX in year 2015. For West 13th, it's $503,000. For 67th, it's $936,000.
Hold on, Tom, just so people understand the numbers, because you're going to want to go back and look at this. This is what it. The $977,000 is what it cost us now to provide service along that corridor with our regular fixed route. So that's why we're calling it no build. That's what it costs on an annual basis. If you use the West 13th, West 11th mitigation, and we're doing these all in $2,009, $10, right? So we haven't, we don't have inflation built in, but, so you have a comparison. If we were to put the West 13th, 11th in place, this is how much more we would have to add to our operating budget in order to pay for the extras, the additional service, basically 10-minute service. So that's the additional cost of providing it out. And this is what we'd have to do for 67th. And because 67th takes longer, the trip, there's a, there's a higher cost to it in time. And then you can see what happens out, projected at least in 2031, where the no build has become more expensive, because essentially, due to congestion, the buses have slowed down, so we've had to add more service to maintain kind of the frequency. And but with the West 11th or 67th, we've been able to maintain our frequency without having the effects of congestion.
So Mark, you want to talk about the long-range financial plan while you're up there?
Yes, we do an eight-year financial plan, and we have, due to really fortuitous funding from the federal government for $8.3 million in federal funds for bus replacement, we've been able to project out that in the next eight years, we should be able to make all of our current, maintain all of our current service, and at the same time, add this additional service with no projected deficit, essentially.
And no service cuts?
And no service, that's what I'm saying. We can maintain all of our existing service and add this service, and we can do it within the existing revenue stream.
Mark, when you do this, is this part of what you have to demonstrate to the federal?
That is absolutely true.
And they examine it as they examine proposals from across the country?
Yes.
To question your, the basis upon which you're.
They'll audit all of our assumptions in terms that we put into the budget what's going to happen in revenues. Because they, nor do we want to fund a program that in fact, the district can't maintain over a period of time. So they, this is one of the requirements, is a long-range financial plan.
Thanks, Mark. This is a graphic showing the same relationships that Mark outlined. Another, on the benefit side, looking at transit travel time and auto travel time for the different alternatives. You can see on the left-hand side, we have no build, gray is transit, green is auto. And then as we look at TSM 13th and 67th, you can see that transit travel times are reduced in all scenarios, but primarily with the 13th, 11th has the best time savings, 67th is similar. But what's interesting is that auto travel times are also reduced under these alternatives. And one of the reasons for that is, if you look at our bus access, our business access transit lanes, this is an image of what that would look like. We have some of them in operation today, but on a West 11th, the benefit of those lanes is that they get both the buses and the right turners out of the flow through traffic. And so that's a, our traffic engineers have determined that it actually saves auto travel time in that fashion. Lastly, looking at ridership, you can see the differences between the different alternatives. TSM, about $90,000 additional rides, and this is an annual, annual boardings additional in 2031. 13th, 11th, about $600,000. 67th, about $650,000. So, John, you want to talk about the rest of the conversation?
Take a break here, and see, there's a lot of information out there. Let's go to the council and see kind of what, let's answer questions, and we can talk about schedule.
The way I wanted to do this today is, ordinarily in our council meetings, we have three-minute timers working, but we're going to try to have this conversation without having three-minute timers working, and know that you will all time yourselves, and so we can have an easier flow of conversation and go back and forth a little bit. And the only comment I want to make from listening to this conversation thus far, because I haven't seen it anywhere in here, and we have state goals and local goals for not only reducing congestion, but for reducing carbon emissions and greenhouse gases. And I just didn't see that reflected in the presentation, but that's certainly something that we hope to see move dramatically with MX, and you might want to talk about that a little bit.
Sure. So basically, that's, that's part of our analysis, and in particular, those are things that we look at more closely in the environmental document. But we have done some analysis looking at, generally speaking, and Alan might be able to attest to this, but the methodologies out there to determine kind of corridor level greenhouse gas emission savings, I would say are not very well-developed. And so we've got research showing that transit can be a tremendous strategy for reducing greenhouse gas emissions in a corridor, and on a regional basis, we're still working through a methodology that can, can give us a more definitive sense of the differences. But basically, you can look at things like vehicle miles traveled before and after. So we've got those kinds of numbers. We can start to look at our transit passenger load in the corridor. That itself is an indicator of savings. Those people are, so you'll see a kind of a reduction in auto travel modes, as you see an increase in transit travel mode. So those types of things, we can start to parse out that kind of, those kinds of benefits.
So I don't know if LTD board members, if any of you want to make any comments before I open it up to council, anybody? Yes?
Mayor, I just want to say, and we've heard a lot of community discussion, and one thing that's really important about this data is data, is what Mark said, and it just can't be emphasized enough, we got extra money in for buses, and that took away some operating costs. So that's one of the reasons, these numbers, because we hear all the time, it costs an extra $1 million to run down 11th. Those numbers have changed, and that's really important, in my view. I've been listening to that, going to a lot of those meetings. I couldn't support adding something that's going to cost a million bucks right off the bat, one more to do this, operating cost. But those numbers have changed, as demonstrated here. So I just want other committee to note that that's a significant change, what's changed as this has grown, really significantly.
Any other LTD board members?
I would just like to respond to what you said. Reducing the vehicle miles traveled, and reducing the congestion, and reducing greenhouse gases, I think speaks to the board, is something that we all care very much about, and we see MX as a way to do that, and that's why we're so solidly behind this.
Thank you. I did, before I go around and ask councilors, want to say one thing that didn't come out, but I got it in, and Mike passed the information onto me, and I think it's really important, because when I looked at this, I know we're trying mightily to decrease any negative impacts on businesses and so forth, but at the same time, my concern is that we don't try to do that so much that we ruin what we're trying to build, and we actually don't have a viable public transit system. So that was my concern, and so I was pleased to find out that even with all this mitigation, it's 75% on dedicated lane, right?
That's right.
And so.
And that compares to 65% on our other built products, projects.
So even with all the effort and mitigation, they're still doing better in dedicated lane than either Franklin or Gateway, which means to me, we're in the, we're in the really good ballpark of having the kind of system we want to have. So I appreciate that information. Betty, did you want to, any questions, or are you the first to start?
Oh, thank you. Suppose you didn't do this route now, and you did another one. Well, then, could you save all the information from this? You say you're, this is just one of the ones you're going to do. You're going to do Highway 99. Suppose you did that first, could you save all of this and use it later?
The information that we've generated is corridor-specific. We look at quarter by quarter. So, you know, assuming that we are talking about a system, and we came back to that quarter within a period of time, some of the data might be useful for that quarter, but it wouldn't be useful to look at 99 or Riverbroke.
I didn't mean that. I meant, could you save it and use it later for this quarter?
I would imagine has, it has a half-life, and I can't tell you what that is, because, you know, as the, as circumstances change out in that quarter, then we would have to go back and adjust the data.
I would say too, that, I mean, a lot of the resource that we put in at this point was per prescribed federal process. And so, as Mark alluded to, that has a shelf life, and I think we'd be concerned about not losing what is, I mean, it's a considerable amount of resource that we've put into the process today.
Thank you.
Well, I have a number of questions, but the first one, I don't know if this is a question so much for, for the LTD board or staff, and by the way, thank you very much for the hard work of preparing all of this and coming to us to have this conversation. I don't know if this is so much of a question for the board and the staff so much as it is for council, but when I look at slides 17 and 18, for me, there's a fundamental question that I think we have to address as a council before we go too much further here. When you look at the recommendations from the West Eugene Collaborative, the first line says that it's not an option to maintain West 11th as it's currently construed as a retail avenue, which is kind of the fundamental thinking behind the West Eugene Collaborative, that it's going to be rebuilt as a different sort of thoroughfare, which means necessarily that you're going to rebuild the businesses that are there, you're going to, I don't know, eliminate or fundamentally change the land use down that corridor, is what I'm assuming from the work that's been done there. Because those businesses currently there are auto-dependent and dependent on the current configuration. But then I look at the Chambers first line in slide 18, that says, "The chamber will work to ensure that the West 11th property owners and businesses are not adversely affected." So for me, there's kind of a question here about our larger picture here. Is it going to stay the same? Is it going to, are we going to maintain and do everything we can to keep those businesses there? Or is the intent to change fundamentally that transit corridor and the businesses that line it? And I don't know if that's an LTD board question or a council question to be worked out at some point.
Gary Watts, just respond to that.
When you did that, when you said that statement, you left out the most important word. You left out congested.
Congested.
And I think that's the emphasis. It cannot be maintained as a congested corridor. I don't think there's any intent to eliminate retail on that corridor. At least, I haven't heard that.
Well, forgive me, I don't mean to be argumentative in any way, but we've, as a part of the Envision Eugene process, have been looking at what that corridor may look like at some future point, where we're looking at multi-story businesses close in to the outside edges there, which necessarily means that we're going to change and get rid of what's there right now. I mean, that's what we're planning to do with those, with those long-term looks, at least. It's how it appeared to me as it was presented.
Andrew, you just have to be next, so you can just pop right on in.
I'm sorry, are you done, Michael?
That's my first question, and I'm trying to honor the mayor's process here and have kind of an iterative conversation, so that's great.
When she gave us directions. So that's not what I've heard at all, at all, at all, at all. What I've heard, what I've witnessed in being at a lot of these meetings and being on the GelPAC, is definitely listening to the businesses and trying to address the mitigation. I personally have never heard anybody saying, "We're trying to put them out of business, we're trying to change the face, we want to have double-story business in closest," you know, "to change it." You know, I think that there's a lot of value in the businesses that are there, they obviously have a lot of support, they're not as thriving as they once were due to the economy, and I get that they are very stressed out about this. Everybody's grasping for straws, trying to make their payroll, trying to, you know, make their mortgage payments. I mean, I get it. So I don't think I heard any of that, and I really think that, that this would augment it, and I appreciate this, the statement from the chamber, because I feel the same way, and I don't know how long we're supposed to take, mayor, so.
Not too long.
Okay, so when we were in Cleveland, the one thing that I heard that the community can do is not only continue to support those, but actually support those businesses better. And one of the ways that the chamber, and actually the bus rapid transit, I forget what it was called in Cleveland, they actually set up kiosks at the corner. So if you had a sandwich shop, you could call in your sandwich order, and then they would have it delivered to the kiosk, and so the people could just come and pick it up, as opposed to them. You know, so there's creative ways of continuing to support those businesses there. So I don't, I didn't get that, and I was just kind of responding to his, because I don't really have any questions, because I think I have a lot more answers than I do questions.
I wanted to also report that we haven't commented on yet, is that several of us participated in a fairly lengthy. in a fairly lengthy session with Bob Chadwick. It was a listening session. And we listened to the business folks and the Our Money Our Transit folks. And they made a very compelling case, one that really moved me, when I hear about the difficulty and the risk that a small business owner takes when some kind of a change comes about that you can't really totally predict the outcome of. I was also equally happy when, last Friday at the city club, and this was the topic, the Our Money Our Transit spokesperson spoke articulately about the extent to which the LTD staff has gone to mitigate potential damage to business. It's just phenomenal. They've had over 150 individual meetings with owners along the line.
And I appreciate that. I guess my point was, like I said, for the course of the council discussion, what is our long-term vision for West 11th? Is it to be a more dense transit corridor where the businesses along the line of West 11th are different than they are now? Or is it to protect and maintain what's there at the moment and not change it? And I'm not clear what the answer to that is.
That's because you haven't come to that. Council has not come to that part of the discussion yet. I would also say...
What's your vision, Mike? What's your vision?
What's my vision? My vision is probably at the moment to look at no build. And it's because I don't, with what I've seen to this moment, I think we may be biting off more than we can chew as the economy exists right now. That's just my opinion. I think that we may be rushing that process through, but we're going to have to see how some of these decisions from Envision Eugene affect this as well. But we're talking about some fairly large-scale sorts of community changes with some of this. And I want to make sure that we go slow and do it intelligently from a larger vision scale. LTD's been doing fantastic work to plan as appropriate for what they've been asked to do. But I'm not sure that the council and the community have had the appropriate kind of long-term vision conversation about what West 11th should be.
Thanks, Mike. So I know George has had his hand up, but I'm going to head down here and come back, come around to him. Chris, do you have anything you want to add to this part of the conversation or questions?
Yeah, actually, I do. And Mike actually provides the opening to the part I would want to talk about, which is, the kind of preamble to that is, impacts happen right now. That's what people feel, is impacts right now. Benefits are something in the future. And so it's difficult to have the conversation, because you're always talking about impacts, and benefits are somewhere off in the distance. And trying to live in today and also live in the future is a very challenging kind of conversation to have, particularly when you're trying to figure out, well, what is the benefit? What are we going to get somewhere in the future? And I think that is a jumping off point for the fact that LTD has done a lot of work. I've been wrapped up in this for the last three or four years now, looking at this. And before that, in the West Eugene Collaborative, when I was involved in that. And I think where we can be of greatest service to this conversation is where we can take the work that LTD has done, which is good work. And good work from the standpoint of the willingness to mitigate, the willingness to adapt. What LTD first started with is not where LTD is at right now. And I'm assuming there will be probably more adaptations and mitigations as we go, as we try to figure out what to do. Where the city of Eugene can help is to provide the linkage between the impacts now and what might be the benefits in the future. And that is a land use conversation. What is the future of West Eugene, and how does transit fit into that? I'm not proposing that as a way to somehow say, "All this work that we've been doing with MX is wasted." In fact, I think the work that MX has been doing is necessary to have an on-the-ground conversation about what the future of West Eugene looks like. And so I look forward to the opportunity to take the work that LTD has done, and to be able to then pick up that work and have a conversation about what West Eugene needs to be. What is that future benefit? Envision Eugene is a significant part of that. The vision of the West Eugene Collaborative is not the only vision. It's one vision. There's a number of visions that might actually work there. I think what LTD has done so far will be a great benefit to feed into the conversation of what that needs to be. So I think it's been so far interesting, because we've talked a lot about impacts, and benefits have been hard to talk about. But I think we do need to be able to have that conversation, and that is, to me, the next part. That's what's going to happen next, is that land use transportation conversation that will really move us to the next place we need to be.
Mike?
I think the discussion between Councilor Clark and Pryor is important, and the LTD board recognized this fairly recently, when we, when we came to the mayor and John and asked if we could change the order in which these approvals will come. Because the things you're talking about really are city council decisions to make. And LTD is an implementing agency. And our job is to help you with land use planning and transit, and to provide alternatives for the community to select.
Thank you for that. I'm going to keep going around. Alan?
I have another answer to that.
Well, so far, so far, I've been a big fan of the existing MX system that runs through my ward on Franklin. It's been a resounding success, I think. And having used it, it's particularly convenient and useful. And I know the ridership numbers are way off the charts, which is why it's nationally recognized, and why it also is looked to by other communities as an example of how to do it right. So I think that that, and I think that the Gateway one's going to be that or better. And it seems to have taken off with a good start as well. I'm impressed with all the public meetings. I think I saw a list of all the public meetings you guys have done that was like four or five pages long, and meeting and hearing with people and changing the, and the breadth of scope that you guys had, meeting and changing all of the different ideas that you have. But to me, the conversation about the benefits and the need are really important. And I think it's becoming clearer and clearer what the benefits and the need are here. And really, to me, what this is all about is about the future, and especially about the right-of-way, and gaining that right-of-way, so that when we are big enough to get light rail, that we're able to do that. But the benefits are clear. I mean, the population numbers that we're seeing in that corridor, and the jobs that are in that corridor, and how that area is going to be transformed, all of Eugene's going to get more dense. And those transportation corridors will especially get more dense. What it looks like today will not be what it looks like in 20 years from now, as is Franklin Boulevard's changing in my neighborhood dramatically. In 20 years from now, that area will not look like it looks today. It'll be much more dense, and it'll be much more thriving, I think. The travel time decreases for transit and auto, and the greenhouse gas reductions that we get from this kind of system are, I think, really clear as well. The costs are also becoming more and more clear, that there's no reduction in services, no financial deficit that's created, and it's the most cost-effective option of all the ones that we're looking at. Lead you indicate that that, this West 11th, 13th system is the best of all the options. I think the mitigation that you guys have done has been really impressive. Where you started and where you are today is really, really different, because you did hear and listen, despite what people have been saying. The number of trees has been dramatically removed, and the plan is dramatically removed. I don't know, how many are you going to plant?
Well, more than we can.
I know on Franklin, there's been a dramatic increase. And on the Gateway, it's several hundred trees that you've actually increased. Actually, it's much prettier than it was before. I know that the amount of parking that you've done and property acquisitions have been dramatically reduced in the mitigation options and the acquisitions that you need to do. And yet, you're still maintaining that 75% dedicated right-of-way, which is really important, what the mayor was talking about, making sure we don't lose sight of that ultimate goal. And I think that also your plan to stage the construction, not just do the whole thing, is that you actually stage the construction, you only construct a bit of it, finish it. And so that all of West 11th isn't under construction at the same time, only parts of it are. Granted, you know, people will think of it that way, but the actual impacts will be dramatically less from that. But the, you know, the bottom line is that the business impacts and the current, on current businesses are very important, and they need to be taken into consideration. And I'm thinking about mitigation mechanisms and funds that might be able to deal with that, along with what the chamber was talking about, how to make sure that that works. The other thing to keep in mind is that this isn't going to be built in today's economic environment. It's not going to be built today. It's going to be built in 2014 and 15. And God forbid, we're in the same economic environment, but I hopefully will be in a thriving economic environment in that year. And then I look at the number of businesses that went out of business as a result of the Franklin corridor, and doing the MX there, and the number of businesses that went out of business in Gateway one, and it was zero. And almost no, or it's very little, domain acquisitions, right?
Strip.
None?
Well, so far, in either of the quarters, we have not been forced to go to court in the domain proceedings. We've been able to negotiate a settlement with all of them.
I suppose people can make that a self-fulfilling prophecy if they'd like, but, or they can choose a negotiation.
George Poling?
Well, I can understand Mike raising his question about the future of West 11th. I remember early conversations around this table with the different council, as well as some of the first overheads of the West 11th corridor, where there were a number of mixed-use centers that were identified that may, in the future, be developed out West 11th. I'm starting my ninth year on the council, and there's only been one true mixed-use center built in this community, and that's Crescent Village. And that was on undeveloped land at the time. So if and when that ever occurs out on West 11th, I don't think I'll be here. The other point is, and I think I'm hearing what Chris was saying, you know, we've heard it from public testimony that, and Joseph's sitting in the back of the room, and I'm going to give him credit for it, is he's made the recommendation that this conversation we're having about BMX should, and the entire transit system, we should be rolling it into the Envision Eugene conversation. Do all the land use planning and transit planning and everything else all at one time. So when we finally do decide to move forward, we have a kind of a plan of attack set out, so we can move in unison and not have to do these individual little battles everywhere, and we just get it all done at once.
Pat?
Thank you, mayor. You know, I spent years working on West 11th as executive director of Foodville County. And one thing that doesn't go into these numbers, you look at how many people are working on West 11th, and Foodville County has about 49 full-time equivalents. Well, they have many times that number of volunteers that don't show up on your employment charts, most of whom choose to ride a bus. And the MX clearly is, would be a great solution for Foodville County, among many others. That being said, I do have questions and concerns. And I had received a message from someone from your staff requesting that we set up a meeting to answer my questions and concerns. And I'd asked for one perhaps prior to this meeting. Maybe we can take time sometime after this meeting to have that get-together, where some of the questions that I'll begin to ask right now, perhaps we can go into more detail. So, you know, we have the Envision Eugene process that we're going through, and Mike Clark, what you talked about regarding West 11th changing significantly with more high-rise buildings, that is a long-term picture for West 11th. But this is a long-term, long time, excuse me, a long-term solution for traveling on West 11th. But my questions are surrounding a couple of things, really. One is, I live in Bethel. Bethel is well removed from West 11th in terms, it's not walking distance to that MX line. It would be walking distance to one that perhaps turned around where the Winkle store is, after traveling down Highway 99. A lot of people in Bethel would be able to access it there. So the question that I will ask, Tom, when you and I get together subsequent to this meeting, is what was the process that LTD went through in deciding to go with West 11th, instead of what really, to a lot of people, seems like a much more obvious choice, which serves more neighborhoods, less employment, more neighborhoods, which would be the Highway 99 to Bethel MX?
We can answer that right here. Your colleagues on the council selected the West 11th corridor. So 99 was on the table, River Road was on the table, West 11th was on the table. And so the council instructed us to look at West 11th.
Then the, perhaps we can talk about the presentations that made the council come up with that decision. Which, for the record, I wasn't on the council that made that decision. The second question I have regarding, is regarding West 11th itself, which is Highway 126. Highway 126 runs down West 11th. It's a state highway, a lot of through traffic on West 11th. Originally, when we talked about MX all these, all those years ago, prior to Glenwood and prior to any of the build-out and any of the planning, Highway 126 wasn't going to be on West 11th. It was going to be on the West Eugene Parkway. The West Eugene Parkway was killed. So 126 will, in perpetuity, be on West 11th. I don't see any alternative to that. And what I'd like to hear is, I've heard from a number of different sources that MX on West 11th was originally planned to be a partner to the West Eugene Parkway. I'd like to hear the discussions perhaps that have surrounded, how do we change the original vision for MX on West 11th, now that we don't have a different route for Highway 126? And I don't need answers on that one right now. I would guess, Mark, that you don't, wouldn't be able to provide me with a two-sentence response to that one.
Longer answer.
So, and the only other thing that I would say is that every, every day I drive to town, not every day, but many days I drive to town in the morning from down West 11th. I work out at Court Sports, which is right at the very end of the proposed MX route. And if you don't know it, a locker room is sure a hotbed of discussion. If you've ever been in a locker room, you know that there's a lot of questions that people have regarding, why is this happening? Business owners, many of them feel that they didn't really have sufficient input in the early stages. No need to discuss that right now, and I've heard some of the, some of the commentary on that. But when we talk about the questions and concerns that I raise in my return email, which I'd hoped we could get together today, but weren't able to do that, we can talk more in detail about that without belaboring it in front of the entire council and the entire board. Thank you.
George?
I've just got a couple of questions. My first question is, does all the information in here, the PowerPoint, does that match, is this current with the attachments that we got in our...
Should be.
Packet today? Okay. So, so all these things are cross-referenced? Okay.
Internally consistent.
Yeah. My, I'm just, I really want to know if the reduced acquisitions and other mitigations are the same as in the PowerPoints, as in the columns here? Okay. Thank you. Let's see. I'm wondering about these business access and transit lanes that is depicted in the picture here. Are those counted in the, in the total of dedicated, are those regarded as dedicated lanes?
They are.
Okay. So those would be, like you say, that 75% will be dedicated lanes. Is that the, and that's the 11th, 13th alignment? Okay. So those are included with dedicated. And is there...
Yeah. Actually, it's probably both, is about that percentage.
It'd be dedicated and...
Well, I'm saying both 6th, 7th, and 13th.
Oh, that's about the same.
About 75%.
Roughly, okay. All right. And is there a way to see a current map of... It's on the website. And it's current, up to date with these, with this data?
We have it on our webpage in quite some detail. So you can, if you want, you can look at it almost by a block. But we'll be sure to, you know, provide you, we can do a rollout copy, so you can see the mitigating.
That'd be nice, yeah. They're a little easier. I mean, the website's okay, but it's really hard.
We'll give you a hard copy, I know, when you look right at it.
The details, okay. That'd be great. I appreciate that.
Now, Tom, is mitigation ongoing? So are there still changes that are developing as we speak?
Continue to move with people and...
So it's a moving picture, George.
Okay.
It's important for everybody to know that, because people constantly say, "Well, I saw this last time, and now it's this way." And I just want to point out, in fact, that's true, because in fact, they're working on it all the time and trying to meet more of the needs of the, of the businesses that are out there.
Well, and probably by the time that I die, yes, totally, both of these, it'll have changed a little bit more.
But I would say we're getting...
We had some...
Pretty close, right?
Yeah. We're narrowing it down. So it's, you know, we've come from here to here. It may, it may move a little bit more.
A little more.
Yes.
What we can do, maybe if you just provide some of those maps to us in the office, and then anybody that wants to will have them over here, and that way you don't have to worry about how to distribute them out.
Yeah, great. Okay. That's all I had.
Mike?
Yeah. One of my, one of my questions that I too would like to meet later and talk... One of my, one of my questions that I too would like to meet later and talk, I want to thank you very much for having reached out so many times, asking me if I can meet with you and discuss some of this, and I haven't been able to do that so far, so that's my fault. I appreciate your outreach. But I'd like to be able to do that, much like Pat has suggested here too, and learn a little bit more. So to that end, I have some questions too that maybe we can go through at a future point. And I want to thank, by the way, Dean too, for having met with me and talked with me. It occurs to me as a why, why this route or why MX. One of the, and perhaps I can be better educated on this, but it seems that the service itself would better serve neighborhoods and manufacturing or employment centers that are less retail-oriented than to serve a corridor that would be a retail or commercial type of corridor. It seems to me that moving, much like what we have with what's going on in Springfield, where you're going out to the hospital and the medical sector and so forth, and when you're between the cities, where you're moving people for either large events, like what's going on on Franklin, or when you're moving people between employment opportunities, that seems like a much better use of that facility than, and it would get more use, to me, I mean intuitively, than it would for a retail or a shopping sort of border. So I guess I would look at the 99 and into the Bethel area sort of alignment and wonder, would that have the potential to serve more neighborhoods and more employment opportunities? As I look here at Slides 5 and 6 that you've shown, there's a good deal of that in the West 11th area, but I didn't see it by comparison in previous discussions when we did some of the initial route selection. And I'm sorry, that occurred right as I joined council or just before, so I don't know that I had a lot of that analysis. But for me, I guess that's an important question for later too, is that kind of, what kind of border is being served in each of these areas?
Can I just respond to that?
Sure, sure.
I think one of the things you have to factor in is retail establishments have employees who have to get to work, who need an economical way to get to work. And I don't think we should overlook that factor in terms of the riders.
Sure, sure. Yeah. And you do need, I think we do forget, because of Amazon and just that border on the south side of West 11th, that you don't see all those people who live just within a quarter mile of the route. High density, real high density, those routes there that, and we're going to continue to have connecting routes there. So you got to do both. You got to serve employment, you got to serve where people live, and you have to have it connected to the rest of the community, or they're isolated.
Well, and on that note, you know, there've been some really great comments about, you know, looking at the, you know, immediate impacts but long-term benefits. And I think a good portion of the conversation, and rightly so, is around business impacts. But part of the conversation that tends to be missing as a part of this public dialogue are the folks that are transit-dependent, are the folks that when you look at on here, you know, one, you look at the employment corridor along West 11th, as well as you look at that high-density housing, a lot of that are low-income housing. They are folks that are transit-dependent. They are families who are riding the buses to those retail jobs, and maybe multiples of those retail jobs. But this makes it possible for them to be connected into our community in a much more efficient, effective way for their families, and make it easier for them to be able to continue to provide quality of life for those families. And so, you know, that's been a piece of work, you know, that we haven't heard publicly much about, but, you know, the team at LTD has worked really hard to also get out and talk to those voices that we don't hear. You know, they're not the ones who have the money to buy all of the signs. They're not the ones that have the money to buy full-page ads in the Register Guard. They're the ones that are working those multiple jobs, trying to make sure that they can feed their families and keep a roof over their heads. And those are the ones that we're not hearing those voices. And getting a chance to go out and meet with folks at the land building and hear the conversation from those that are transient-dependent, this is a big positive impact on their lives. So I think as a part of the conversation, one of the huge benefits of the entire system getting built out, you know, this happens just to be one corridor, and an important corridor, is that, you know, that's improving quality of life for, and a very important, huge piece of our community.
I agree. My question was really about relative one to the other. I agree with you entirely about where the pockets of those largely exist, and I suppose to Alan's question about what my vision would be, is making sure that we're serving the appropriate areas with the appropriate tool or the appropriate sort of things that they need.
Gary?
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize something that Doris said. I think the underlying theme of that was that we're building a transit system here. And right now, we have the Springfield Transit System with a flip-off into part of Eugene. And we think it's as important, as important as Eugene is a factor in the transit system and the population here, that it be a systemic approach to a rapid transit system. And I can just add, as a transit-dependent person, without a driver's license, without a car, the importance for me of MX has been that I really don't even have to know what the schedule is. And if I miss a bus on West 11th right now, if I go from the library where I work out to CD World to pick up a CD, if I miss a bus, I'm not going to make it back on my lunch hour. If I miss a bus on the MX when it's running 10 minutes later, I know the worst I have to wait. If it pulls out as I'm running up going stop, I know the worst I have to wait is 10 minutes. And I know that the bus runs on, I know it's like on a nine and a three, or a six, you know, a six and a two. I mean, that's all you need to know, is the minutes after the hour. Even when it gets to the weekends and the evenings, you just extend the time a little bit. But that's a critically important factor if you want to bring transit-dependent people to those businesses out there to shop on a lunch hour or on a less extended period of time. If you're looking at spending 50 minutes on the bus, that's not going to cut it. But if you can get there in 14 to 15, and back in 15, then you still got time to eat your lunch.
So I'm going to call on Gray, because he wants to make a comment, and then I want to let everybody else know about Andrea, George Poling, George Brown, and Pat in the queue. N.L.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. Twenty years ago, I was on the planning commission. And 11 years ago, I moved from River Road into Bethel, right around the corner from where Councilor Farr lives now. What I want to point out is, growth doesn't happen in isolation. And the effects and ramifications of the residential and commercial growth that we've had over the last 20 years has had a major impact on travel patterns, on corridors, and everything else. So the way we traveled 20 years ago, going out to Bethel, going out to Barger, to Royal Avenue, has significantly changed because of all the housing development that we've had, and the pressures that have been placed on West 11th, and 18th, and Royal, and subsequently Roosevelt now, as arterials that were not as frequently used as they were before, but now are heavily used, are getting more heavily used. So one of the things I want to point out is that in this whole planning process, one of the things that lag, always lag behind is in development, is transportation, particularly transit planning. So we have planned for residential development. We have planned for commercial development. We have not planned very well for how we move people between their homes, and schools, and businesses, and work. And one of the consequences of that is to see how we have planned or not planned transportation on River Road. What it has done for us as an agency is added travel time to, you know, our bus routes, and, you know, is significantly impacting our whole transit system. So what I want to point out is that this all has a domino effect. And what West 11th was, you know, 20 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago, isn't what it is today, and it won't be what it is in the future. And if we're not careful, all of this thing is going to clog up, because the center of gravity of Eugene, by plan, has moved west and north. And unless we start catching up with that particular dynamic, we're going to find ourselves in some really, really deep trouble in the future. So I think that, you know, we need to take a step back and really look at that. You know, I understand where you're coming from, Councilor Clark, on this, but, you know, I think there was a wise decision in terms of a previous council, and looking at the West 11th corridor, but I want to say, you don't look at it in isolation. You have to look at it in relationship to the impact on all the other parts of the community that feed into that. And that growth pattern, and that growth, has caused us to have some major traffic issues even now on Barger, Roosevelt, Royal, and West 18th, because people are avoiding West 11th if they can. And they're going to avoid other parts if they can, and sometimes they won't be able to help or avoid any of this in order to get back and forth to do what they need to do. So the only real solution in the final analysis is going to be a transit solution. And it's going to be part of the larger picture, but it has to happen at some point, so.
So we have really, we're going to transition to the other room at 7:30 to start our regular council meeting. So I'm going to say we have about 10 more minutes for everybody to try to get in their conversation here. So I've got Andrea first, and George Poling, George Brown, Pat, and Dean.
Well, in light of that, Mayor, I just really was responding to some things my peers said, and it probably would better be left unsaid. So what I do want to say though is I appreciate Doris's comments about the community that we're concerned about, that, you know, we're looking to serve, because I believe transportation is a part of community health. And when, you know, when you look at wanting to have a healthy, viable, vibrant community, public transportation is a part of it.
George Poling?
I've got a question about the summary of operating costs, if we go back to that. In the year 2015, you say because of the money that we're not spending on buses and equipment, we're able to offset the operating costs, so it made up that $1 million in operating costs.
It's half a million.
Half a million. What about the ongoing years after that?
And that's, that was, it would obviously grow with inflation, so it would be by half a million and something, and we'd pilllt that into the long-range plan. So we looked out for eight years, and in fact, our reserves start growing after that. So we anticipate that given even a fairly pessimistic projections that we will, our budget will be balanced, and we will not have to cut service, even adding the extra service for West 11th.
So just by that one year of offset, it's going to make?
8.3 million is significant spread out. And I can show you our long-range financial plan if you want. It's available. Well, that's a simple idea, but we got a more detailed one that shows you assumptions on revenues and everything, if you're more interested in it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
George Brown?
I had just had one more question I forgot to ask the first round. It's on page 17, the ridership chart. I just don't understand it, I guess. I, I'm looking, it says additional annual boardings compared to no build, and you have no build at zero boarding?
Well, if you get no build, we would be carrying more passengers in 2031 on no build than we are doing today. What we're talking about is beyond no build, assuming that no build is the base. How many more would you get if you had those other options?
I see. What do you base those figures on? Just briefly, if you can.
It comes from a computer model that is used nationwide for all of transit enhancements, for Light Rail and for BRT. And it has been specified by the Federal Transit Administration, and it is the model that they will go back and test all of our assumptions. We put in the local data, and then the model predicts the ridership.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you. I do regularly ride MX, and it really is delightful. There's no question about it. I rode it to the game.
And I rode it back together?
We rode it back together, yes. I tried to ride it to the start of the Eugene celebrate, the Eugene Parade on Saturday, but it was rerouted, so.
That's because the parade was on our route.
If I'd have been thinking.
Yes.
Just one other question that I hope we can address in a subsequent meeting is, you had planned for a build-out on Coburg Road, and testimony that you received and other things caused you to back off and come up with a no build on Coburg Road. I'd just like to have you discuss with me when we meet, what is the difference between Coburg Road and West 11th in terms of the testimony and your reaction to the testimony?
Let me address that, because we did not conclude a no build on Coburg Road. Coburg still is a critical corridor. If you're going to have to have a system, Coburg is part of it. What happened is, is we were looking at two quarters at the same time, Coburg Road and the Gateway Extension. And as we moved in, we got into kind of more controversy and discussion on Coburg Road, and the Springfield City Council said, we're ready to go. And we only could do one corridor at a time. So we said, we'll put Coburg Road on hold, we'll go do the Gateway Extension.
And there's one other piece to that. The council at the time, the Coburg Road Corridor was identified, required an 80% dedicated lane. And the physical construction of the Coburg Corridor with the buildings and everything, it was mathematically impossible to do it. So as a result of that, the council, and at that point, then I was on the council, I wasn't on the council when that 80% dedication thing was put in there, because of that lack of 80% dedication, the council said, you know, you can't go forward with it.
Thank you, both, Mark and George. And our conversation then can perhaps cover Mark's point regarding Gateway next, and then West 11th ahead of Coburg, and then, George, you're the 80% dedication. Thank you very much.
Alan?
I guess if we're looking at the jobs in the West Eugene Corridor versus the exists there today, and potential for more, which is the jobs that exist today, and I know there are potential there, I think it's not even close to West 11th. Extremely, there's more jobs that people transport even from. I guess I'm a little puzzled by this 99 conversation and discussion. To me, it's not a matter of which one. I think we should do both. It's a matter of which one we're going to order.
Right.
I think we need to do Coburg too. So it's really a matter of which one first. And I think that decision shipped sail a long time ago.
Threw people off the scent.
And that was to do it on the West 11th. I hope we do Highway 99 next, because I think that's an important part to get done, going up 670, Highway 99 into the Bethel and Dowling areas. I think it's kind of weird to bring it up at this late point at 11:59, and suggest that we should start all over again. I think it's taken us a number of years to get here, like four, and if we?
I'm not suggesting that.
Do this process in and say, oh, you need to go back to 99. We'd be, you know, five to seven years out before we even sign anything again, through that process, and then a couple more years, probably decades before we went out. A handful of years. So, and frankly, I think if we fill this West 11th option, chances of a Highway 99 option, I think those get dimmer and dimmer.
So we're going to wrap this up with Dean and Mike Ister. So Dean?
Well, thanks, Mayor. I'd just like to respond to Mike. There's a community out there I'd like to advocate for that no one's really put their finger on, and there's a community that's turning 65 by 10,000 a day. And not all those in Eugene, but our portion of 10,000 a day. Some of us would like, when we're 10 years from now, Mike, you don't want us in our car, driving down. That's just 10 years.
Good point, buddy.
20 years from now, you really don't want us. So whether the vision is whatever it is, I think points well taken, even if it's retail, that's a pretty nice place to go, and you want us on that bus.
Mike?
Well, Transplan in 2001, updated 2004, 2007, called for a regional transportation system. All these corridors were identified in Transplan. Transplan is current, it's been updated. It is a question of when, it's not if, it's what order. And I would hate to think of us talking about reordering. This process started in 2006 when the city council came to the LTD board. It's 2011, and I don't know how many millions of dollars we've spent between then and now. I don't think this is a time to think, to go back to say, should we start with a different corridor? It's a transportation system, and it's based on our community values.
I said, maybe a year or so, or whenever we had that discussion ago, that my only objection was how slow it was to get these things to come through. objection was how slow it was to get these things to come to fruition, that you have to work for so many years to go through all the processes to get to where you're actually putting it on the ground. And so, we were talking about, I just think we find ourselves in a different time economically. We'll see what it brings, because I think we really all do need to be on the same page to lay our hands on the dollars and to build the system. So, it's going to be very important for us to get ourselves really working hard together, send a message of what we want for our communities and our metro system. And I know in the conversation we've had in the past, who knows what the future's going to bring, but we've talked about even how we might try to do ninety-nine and River Road at the same time, so we can ramp it up a little faster, instead of it taking as long as it's been taking. So, those are all things that are very challenging and very, and will continue to be challenging. But I think the Gateway really represents a big step forward, because it begins to look more like a system. And this part will, when we get to where we make our decision, has a potential to really make it feel like it and function like a system. And that's why they were talking earlier about how much you gain as you, in ridership, as you add to the whole system. It just moves more people getting from one place to another, using the entire system to go about how they meet their transit needs. So, very, very important. George, real quick?
Yeah, one thing real quick. I don't think anybody here at the table suggested that we stop what we're doing now and look at reordering. I think it was just some clarification questions on Pat's.
Thank you.
At least, that's the way I interpreted it.
Sure.
So, just so people here at the table and watching, don't misunderstand what was being said, is I believe Pat was just asking for some clarifications on why are we doing it in the order that we're doing it, not that I want to change the order.
And all questions are good questions, so.
Even at 11:59.
Exactly. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. We appreciate the conversation, and the work goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Run across the mall.